All right, welcome to another episode of Kiwiskeen Stories where neighbors and meet neighbors. Today on this village council candidate special series, we have Nick Lopez Jenkins. He is a Kiwiskeen resident for twenty five years, lives here in the Key with wife and two kids. He's a U M graduate and an insurance advisor. We're gonna get to know him and his run for village council. Nick, how are you doing today?
Doing great, a hundred. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. So looking forward to it.
Sam here, looking forward to get to know you more. So let's dive right in. What is the best piece of advice you have ever been given?
Well, the best piece of advice I've ever been given, well, I'll answer that two ways. Just because I think in general in life, being given advice is great, seeing people live the advice they give is probably even more valuable. I've been lucky enough to grow up with some great role models. My father, a lot of adults that I've had around me in my family along with that, coaches, teachers, so. So that always I think is the most important thing, being a mentor, actually living what you preach. But if I said just a piece of advice to give as a statement is do things that scare you. I think it's important in life to, maybe scares wrong word, maybe it's more do things out of your comfort zone. Whether it's, you know, changes your career or, you know, run for office or, you know, go talk to the pretty girl in the corner that you're afraid to talk to, whatever it is. But it seems taking risks like that tend to pay off in the long run. You live with less regret in your life or regret is a terrible thing for things you haven't done. So I think do things that are outside the comfort zone is probably the best advice I could give to someone.
Can you share some of the things that you've, I guess, taken on that have challenged you?
Um, like I, like I said, I think me running for office probably epitomizes it. And it's because there's so many different things. I mean, go and have to knock on strangers' doors, you know? And you know, you go on podcasts with very talented and intimidating people like yourself. It's not easy, not an easy thing. So. But it just asking, you know, asking a friend to put a yard sign in their yard. You never know. It's, it's all these kind of things that just, I mean, I'm fifty two right now. And so somebody explained this a lot better than I did, but you know, we're just a certain age. There's, there's not a newness to things, you know, days kind of bleed into each other. You have your, you know, I have children, so those things are new experiences for me. And I'm married and, you know, but the things can become a little mundane. This is really, like I said, open my mind. I mean, I am, like I said, I don't sleep at night. I'm staring at the roof. I'm getting up at four in the morning. So, and, but I have to tell you, it's, it's an energizing feeling. It really, it really gives you a sense of, of drive and purpose. And I'm really enjoying the experience. And like I said, it's, it's something that, you know, I kind of was afraid to do at the beginning, and now I am incredibly glad that I'm in it and I'm doing it. I'm doing this, like I said, and I'm, I'm enjoying every moment of it. So, and I plan on enjoying every moment of it. I know some of our elections here have become a little contentious as of late. That is not the route that I'm going to go. I'm gonna make friends. I'm gonna enjoy this experience and hopefully it turns out well.
I gotta ask, how has been the knocking on doors? Because it's not something that we usually do. You see it in movies, hey neighbor, welcome to the neighborhood, but people don't, it's not. How has been the knocking on doors, like approaching like?
Like you go and then you knock and then you take like five steps back. So people think, you know, you're not, you're not like trying to do a home invasion.
Right, right.
But whenever possible, I, I'll try to bring my daughter because she's very, she's a four year old. She's adorable. So as I said, that's a little disarming too. But I, I'll be, I'll be completely serious and I'm, and I'm not just trying to, you know, engraise myself with people of Kiwiskeen. This experience has been great, you know, and there's so many talented people here and so many people, you know, it's, it's like I said, it's strange that people want to hear your opinion because you usually have your friend group that, you know, you chat with and whatever, a little bit outside of that. But the fact of being able to engage with people you've just met and they're interested in what you say, and I'm interested in what they say because I've honestly learned, like if you were to ask me why I began running, my, my reasons were pretty simple. I just thought, you know, it's, this is the way, you know, village government is meant here. It was set up this way. It's a non-paid position. It's meant for, you know, for talented, hardworking people to step up and, you know, and fill a role for, you know, four years, maybe eight years. But, um, but every time I talk to somebody, whether it's finding out about maybe the, the, the sports fields or the need for special needs or, you know, my street floods like this, it's, it's amazing what you learn about how everybody's life in Kiwiskeen is just a little bit different. And being open to hearing those differences is, like I said, it's very educational. So.
Awesome, awesome. That's awesome. So tell us a little bit about what are some of the most important things in your life today?
Oh, like I said, I'm gonna answer this baseline, obviously. My family goes without saying, that's it. So, got it out, a hundred percent, my family. But to get a little deeper, I guess, for me personally, I love to travel. I said the pandemic kind of curtailed that for, for, for a couple of years. I literally had a, my fiftieth birthday was a couple of years ago, right at the height of pandemic in July. And my wife, who was, was a very acute sense of smell. And with the trip was booked, we're going to New Orleans. New Orleans is like our second home. We love going there. She went to college in Loyola. Like I said, I've got family, I've got a charity I work with out there as well. And all of a sudden, she's like, like a week before my fiftieth birthday, she's like, she's like, I can't smell right now. And I'm like, can't smell? And I'm like, I think I've heard something that might. I go, hmm, it's like protested. I'm like, oh, yeah, I think you should too. And she came back positive. And then of course, and I couldn't smell. So and then my kids couldn't smell. I mean, I guess they couldn't smell because they were too young to verbalize that. Because we all ended up getting it at the very beginning of the pandemic in July of two, twenty twenty. So that kind of got the trouble. But like I said, since we are, you know, back now, we just, we actually just got back from a trip to Napa for her birthday, which was fantastic. I used to do, before I did insurance, I did wine and spirit sales. We had a great time out there. New Orleans is, as I mentioned before, is like our second home. Also love going to, like I said, you know, Charleston is another favorite place to go. So things like nationally so far, hopefully we're, we're looking to do a trip with my parents in January to Spain. So I love traveling. I love reading, although my wife doesn't consider reading because they're audiobooks. So, but I've, I've, you know, I've gotten into reading some of the classics like, you know, To Kill a Mockingbird, stuff, stuff that, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't a reader in high school or in college for that matter. I kind of picked it up later in life. I switched audiobooks down just because I drive so much for work or if I'm at the gym, you know? I mean, mind you, if I'm not, you know, listening to Kiwiskeen stories, obviously I listen to the books.
Thank you.
A little plug there. But, um, but yeah, that's, I mean, like I said, I've, I've got a great friend group. You know, I went to school in Belen. So back when I was graduated in eighty eight, there was ninety nine of us, two of them have passed away sadly. But we've got a chat and we get together often, often as we can. We have a lot of overlap with business and personal stuff. So I guess those, besides, obviously, once again, my family, those are probably the things that, you know, the passions that I have right now.
You know, I, I went to Columbus, but one of my, one of my best friends. No, but wait, one of my best friends is from Belen, so it is possible.
There you go. No, it's, it's funny because it's always, it's always been that grind and they're just there, you know, and you end up and you grow up and they, they become your best friends too. And it's, it's just one big circle. I mean, my, you know, Miami is, it's, it's a small town. I mean, I, I, oh, it's Miami. I'm like, I'm trust me. You better behave yourself because everybody you meet knows somebody you know, that's for sure. So.
That's true. That's true. So tell us, what inspired you to run for village council?
I, I mentioned it before, it seemed a role that I would be good at. Honestly, I'm humbled by people, you know, showing the amount of support they have for me. Because as I said before, I've met so many people who they're so talented. I look at them like, why aren't you running for council? Why am I running for council? It's ridiculous. You know, but it just, it just came out in a way that, you know, after conversations with my wife, she's like, look, you should get involved. You've always been, you know, like I said, tied in, you know, having comments about what's going on in the village and whatever, you know? It's time to step up, you know? I mean, because, you know, as they say, talk is cheap, you know? So give it a shot, see how you receive. And you get out there, you'll make friends. As I said, I, I, that's, I've generally, I've generally been the kind of person that walks in a room and leaves with more friends than he walked in with. So I thought this would be a good experience. I thought, whatever. And like I said, I think I have a decent shot to win. I think the other candidates are running are fantastic as well. And I think we've got a good group. We had a great, I, I wouldn't even call it a debate there. We had a nice forum, you know, where people exchange ideas, you know? And that's, that's kind of, I think, the essence of a council is to really, it's a more of a collaborative thing. And honestly, if I get on, I'm looking to create consensus, you know? I don't want four, three votes that are, you know, with hurt feelings. I'd rather, you know, you know, six, six, one, seven, zero. I mean, those, those are the kind of things because I think the values that we share here to get back, why I got in, I wanna, I wanna keep that, you know? We have a very unique place. I've traveled all over the country for work, personally, whatever. There's some great cities out there. There's nothing like this. Okay? There's just like, I mean, I love this. It's a, it's a Bob Dylan quote. It's like, I'm paraphrasing his quote. It's like, look, there's a lot of places I love, I love Kiwiskeen more. So, and that's kind of what I, that's the way I want to keep it for myself. My parents are here. My kids are two and four. I want, I want them to be able to enjoy what I've enjoyed. So.
So in, in your experience, you're in the Key and in your run, and I'm sure knocking on doors, what are the most important issues that you think of, you've seen the Kiwiskeen is facing today? And how would you try to tackle them if any, if any ideas on that?
Well, look, I, I think, and it's, it's funny because life is fluid. So you can get into this thinking, you know, okay, I gotta, I gotta deal with this and that or whatever. And I think over the past week, I mean, Bearcut Bridge is, is the issue right now, you know? You look at what happened in Sanibel, their bridge won't be back for a month. Can you imagine that the, that crisis, the humanitarian crisis we would have in this island? If Bearcut Bridge was out for five, six weeks? I mean, what would you do? It was, it, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what we would do. You know, just the, for the needs of a boat lift. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, everybody would have to leave the island, I imagine. You know? So that has to be, I said, from having met with the village manager and talking to their people, I mean, that bridge could be taken out by a category two storm, you know, which is weaker than what hit the Fort Myers area. Category two, you know, probably happened every couple of years. And like I said, a direct hit could cause that. So. And the one other daunting thing about it is that they did a refurbishment ten years ago. They said it had a total of twenty years. And then by speaking to people, they said, well, look, if they put shovels in the ground today, it wouldn't be done till twenty twenty seven. For another five years. So like I said, that window's closing. I don't think it's a risk that we can take. I think, you know, a state of emergency, whether it's with the county or the state, has to be declared on this so we can expedite permitting and really get that started. Obviously, the resiliency program, those are something that we have, we have outs to contract for thirty percent fill for the K A area. So when that comes back, that obviously be something that we have to act on as soon as possible. I don't think there's a, there's a reason to drag our feet on that. But Bearcut is right now would be the number one topic. If we went to smaller things, it, issues that could be dealt with probably in the near term. I know some things are going on with, with, with traffic as far as extending the right turn lane on Harbor and, and the left turn lane in Key Colony. Might be other ideas. Like I said, I had heard it from a bunch of people who are smarter than me about possibly putting like a circle or peanut shaped intersection at the, at the corner of Harbor. And like I said, I don't know how easy that is to solve. And then the other things are just things that, like I said, engagement with the city of Miami, I mentioned this the other night, I've got a, a great relationship with Francis Suvar. I've known him for twenty years as a friend. I've talked to him on Wednesday. Well, we're, we're Saturday today. Sorry, it's gonna be released, but. And he has, he's committed to be good neighbors too. They come here, his parents come here. I've seen his parents here at the beach club and at church. And, you know, I said, we're all one community and it's good to make good neighbors, you know? Neighbors, you know, invite each other for barbecues and, you know, I mean, suing, suing the city of Miami for the boat show, silly, it made no sense. I went to the boat show. I had a good time at the boat show. Boat show is not the problem, you know? It's the other kind of development or the other kind of events that, you know, we have to deal with and say, look, you know what? This doesn't really work for our community. And, you know, we have to look for a long-term solution. But those are basically, yeah, things that I would be looking for.
If you were to take office, for example, what are some of the things you would do right off the bat?
Right off the bat, like I said, I would, I would engage with the city of Miami to get some sports fields onto Virginia Key. Because if you really look at it, if you look at, at Brickell and you look at where we're at, Virginia Key is like right in the middle. So I know we consider it closer to us, but it's not too far from what the Miami residents are. And they have, they have a desperate need for, for parks as well, you know, for playing fields for their children. So I think that's, that's something that we can have common ground and, and, and get going quickly. And back to Bearcut, I, I mean, I would make it an absolute priority to engage the county and say, hey, look, we need to do something and get this done now, you know? Because, I mean, going through the regular permitting process to get Bearcut done, I, I don't think we'll cut it. I don't think we'll, we'll have it done in time. So it's honestly, I think declaring a state of emergency on that bridge is necessary. And this is the perfect time. I don't, I don't mean to, you know, harp on the misfortune of people in Sanibel. We used to spend summers in Sanibel when I was in high school and loved it. But that, we can't let that happen here. That's unacceptable.
That's fair. It's very, you see those pictures, you know, that, that, that bridge was down, I think, in more than just one location. It was a long bridge. It's a longer bridge than ours.
Yeah, like I said, but it's, it's the only one in Sanibel. So it's, I mean, crazy.
So now we talked some, some of the issues and that you think are pain points here. What about some of the things that the village is doing well? What are, what are some of the things that you've seen?
Um, well, Fourth of July committee, like I said, I mentioned, I, I love it. Best Fourth of July parade in the state of Florida, I'm gonna say, not for the other ones, but I'm gonna go with that one. But I, I will tell you, and it's one of the things where I told you that, that so many things have been uncovered while I've done this. There is a level of volunteerism within this community that I had no, no grasp of, you know? There are people doing things, whether it's with the foundation, or it's the Rotary Club, or it's the Fourth of July, or it's the Vision Board. These are really, really smart, successful people donating their time for free to, to better things, not only here, but in other places. I mean, I was, I, I attended Rotary Club breakfast yesterday on Friday, and I was blown away by what they do, you know? And they're not looking for publicity. They're not looking for, it, it is just amazing. And you know what? And they have fun doing it too. You know, they've got a big wine event coming up, you know, at, at, at the links in November. They've also got a Halloween party at the beach club. So I'm just plugging in a couple of events they got coming up because I probably go to both of them. And it's just people like that doing it. So that's, I mean, what are we doing as a community? I would say that. What we're doing as a government, I say this every time I, I have a chance to speak to anybody. There is no government that you get the amount of pleasantness, pleasantness. And I'm not saying that's saying it right. That's fine. But people know what I'm talking about.
Makes sense.
When you interact as you do with the village of Kiwiskeen, there is, there is a smile when you walk through the door. There's a level of attentiveness. There's a level of respect. I challenge everybody just to Google D M B Miami right now. The D M B in Miami, the online appointment, you have to show up in person every morning. We're waiting in line to get into the D M B. It is a madhouse. Okay? You need a license here. You just make a phone call. This, everything gets taken care of here. This is a full-service community. We all pay an additional cost to live here. I have no doubt about that. It's definitely not the cheapest place to live in my, in South Florida. Once people, you know, if you were to look at the pros and cons of where would you want to be and what it, I mean, this is, I mean, like I said, we're not having an exodus from Kiwiskeen, you know? People want to come. Every time I mention to somebody, they say, oh, no, I live in Kiwiskeen. I say, oh, that's great. I live in Kendall. I'm not against Kendall, by the way. I like Kendall, but, you know? I don't want to live there. I want to live here. So that's all my Kendall friends make fun of me now. But, but it's true. It's the truth. I just, I, I like living here. I, I take pride in that I'm a Ki rat and you can call me a rat and I'm not insulted. It's something that, you know, it's a badge of honor. And like I said, I always get back to, it's a culture and a lifestyle and everybody's been incredibly receptive. I can't imagine campaigning somewhere else, not here, you know? Because I can imagine getting, you know, I don't like getting towards standing in my face and stuff. So everybody here has been pretty good. Maybe, maybe some people hide when I show up, if it's possible. But.
See the blinds closed?
I'll open real quick and.
So in this journey, you know, in government, you know, and in a lot of places, you now have to deal with a lot of people's opinions and thoughts and ideas. You know, how, how would you work with those that oppose your ideas?
I said, we had, we had our debate on Thursday, a forum that I had. And there's five very talented guys up there. Like I said, it's sad that there, there were, there was no women. I'm sure, you know, we'll have women run next time, including Mary Stevens. I'm giving a plug right there for Alexa, Chris from now, a friend of ours. But that being said, I said, there wasn't an incredible amount of distance between everyone's opinions. I mean, everybody has a different skill set, a different way to communicate it. But everybody's here and I think everybody's doing it because they love this community, you know? So as far as, as far as the fractures issues, I mean, we have the amendments coming up. I said this the other day, there's only one amendment I oppose. It's the amendment for a primary for, for council. I just think, you know, it's really hard to do this when you have a job and, you know, adding a couple of extra months to it would, you know? Like I said, it, it says, it puts a strain that, you know, it might drive some good people from doing it. The other amendments, as I said, you have Amendment Four, which is the super majority to change, you know, zoning ordinance and stuff. And I get both sides of that issue. And I, and I, I try to, like I said, and I heard some very, I'm gonna vote yes on that because I think in the end, it'll create a more efficient village government. I think there are enough guardrails built into it that, that it cannot be abused if the public, you know, is made aware of what's going on. But like I said, I've talked to some very smart, thoughtful people that, that oppose it because they're worried of the word about, you know, worst case scenario. And, you know, if you describe a worst case scenario, I sit there and say, well, you know what? You're right. But, you know, this is probably why you have to be more engaged in who you vote to council, you know? So I, I don't, I, I have never had a, a problem being able to stay out of what's disagreeing. I worked, before I did insurance, I worked in the, the wine industry for many years. And, you know, we all competed in each other, but we were all friends, you know, at the end of the day, you know? Because you win some, you lose some and, you know, and there's, there's certain places or whatever. Look, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm not going in with any pre-determined notion. I mean, if somebody can educate me and convince me to, to think a different way through facts and persuasion, I'm willing to do that. So I'm not going in with a tremendous agenda. I, I need to, to get there, do the hard work. And I know that's, that's the one thing that I said, I am prepared to do the work. I will not show up unprepared. I will have all the information. I'll have questions to ask. But I will listen and I will learn. And the way our government is set up, we do have some great people in place to do some of the hard work for us. And then, like I said, it's, I think Ed London said, we, we're kind of like a board of directors. We need, we need to be conscious and, you know, make sure and have oversight of what's going on and stay educated, stay on top of issues. So. That's, like I said, I, I think I will be able to explain whatever decisions I do make when selected. And I'll, I'll explain it in a, in a thoughtful substantive way. And people might disagree with me, but they'll, they'll, they'll realize, okay, well, there's a reason why you think this way.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I tell people all the time that voting is the most powerful tool that they have and they should always go out there and never think that their, their vote doesn't count or it's just one more. And many, it does count and they should go out there and educate themselves, especially now. We have a lot of, what is it, a net charter changes.
Yeah, seven.
Referendums, I think they're called, they're seven, right? So it's, it's a lot. So. And then the Islander News just published a, a guide so that you can be ready. So I encourage everybody listening to go out there, get a copy and, and read, read it, read them up so that you're ready. So when the, the voting time comes.
The one good thing about this government is that if you're unhappy with what the council does, every two years, four seats turnover, okay? Or the possibility of four. So you can literally go from a minority to majority every two years. And you know what? The budget is there. It's there to be looked at, you know? And if there's things that you question, I'm, please bring them up to me. I'd love to see them, you know? But it's not like we're dealing with, you know, the federal government, even the state government where your tax money goes out and you don't know where it goes. Here, as I said, you look at the budget, it says seventy five thousand dollars to, I'm using, I'm making up an example, to paint the community center. You say, okay, seventy five thousand. Then you can walk outside and say, hey, look, they're painting the community center. There you go, you know? That's, there's a level of, of closeness. That's why I think this is really, people get caught up in national politics. But local government is where the most changes are made. I was asked by a group of, of mothers, say, look, you know what? We're gonna get up and talk. We need other people to talk. Would you like to speak on the issue as well? I've said, you know, I've, I've, I've had, you know, interactions with people with special needs. And I was, I was like, of course. I mean, you know, they, they wanted to get a special needs coordinator, a full-time person placed. And, you know, as, once again, as I told you, you learn this process. I would have assumed that we had that already. We don't. Coral Gables had, Doral has it. We don't. And like I said, so when I hear stuff like that, I'm like, okay. So I get up in the first budget meeting. They spoke much more eloquently, much more substantive than me. But I got up there and said, look, I think this is a, a need that we have. As a community, we should not fall behind other communities here in South Florida. We should be the standard bearer for things like this. And then two weeks later, the second budget meeting, there was money in the budget, not for the full-time person, but there was money in the budget for special needs. And I sit there and think, wow, can you imagine that? You get up, you make a point, a couple of other citizens make a point, a valid point, you have a receptive, you know, a receptive council. And you made a change in, in two weeks, you know? What would it take to, to engage like that in, in Washington or in Tallahassee?
That's different. Yeah, no, it's, it's a different, it's a different monster. You're, you're right. The, the impact of local government is, is very fast, you know? So that's awesome. So if elected, you know, and how many terms that may be, how would you like to be remembered?
Interesting question. Like I said, if and when elected is the way I'd look at it. I said, I, I really would really like to end the contentious nature of our relationship with the city of Miami, okay? The county to a certain extent, but we're part of the county. We're obviously not part of the city of Miami. I think that's, that needs to be ended, you know? And look, there's, I'm not gonna name names, but there's some people on the other side who just use us as, as a way to bludgeon people and that, whatever. And you know what? They're not, you can't be removing them for the process, but just have to go over or around or whatever it is. Because in the end, we're all neighbors here, you know? And I honestly, I mean, when I go out to dinner, if I don't go up to one of the great places here in the Key, you know, I go to Brickell, I go to Wynwood. You know, my wife works in the design district. This is, you know, like I said, I, all my friends, they, they want to come to the beach in Kiwiskeen, want to hang out, want to go to the Ritz, have a cocktail. I mean, it's, it's crazy to think that, you know, I, I don't think the regular, the regular person views us as that different. I mean, we're different because we live out here, we have our own, but like I said, we're all, we're all in South Florida together. So I'd love, I love if I could put that at least in motion. And back to, like I said, back to the Bearcut. I, I'd like to know that even if all I served was four years, that that project, if it's not finished, which I, I doubt it could be, but at least it's been started and it's been started because, you know, myself and all the other council members and obviously Steve Williamson have put the impetus on, on, on the county to get it done. So.
Got it.
And I'd like to, my kids, my wife and my parents to be proud of me as well, and my friends and my neighbors and you.
I'm sure we'll all be, you know, it's, it's a volunteer position and I know that it takes a lot to, to dedicate to public service. So, you know, it's always one, somebody tries, you know, and they try to go for the community, you know, it's, it still, it still merits a thank you for your service, right?
My, my dad has a, a quote, and if I get the names wrong or whatever, when I told him I was gonna do this, it's a, it's an old quote from, Jose Martí was talking to Maximo Gomez. If I get the names wrong, I apologize, but the general, the tenor of the, of the quote will make sense. It's like, so Martí was offering Gomez the, to be the head of the Revolutionary Army. And Gomez asked Martí, he's like, he's like, yeah, but what can you offer me? And Martí looked at him and said, I can offer you the ingratitude of men. Like saying, hey, look, you know what? This is a thankless job sometimes. It's gonna take, but you're gonna, you know what? You'll, you will have the recognition of a job well done at the end. And that's kind of it. So like I said, I, I come into this with open eyes, knowing that some people will be, but I, I think if I do my homework, if I, if I, if I said, and engage with the other members of the council, whatever, I think I'll, I'll be remembered in a good way. I hope. Because there's, there's been some great people that have served here, some incredibly talented people. I've, I've got a chance to meet a lot of them that are here, some of them passed away. But I'd love to be part of that legacy.
So I, I know you mentioned that you've gone to the debates or more like a conversation forums, you know, with the other candidates and stuff. So, and I know you topped on some of your differences. Could you give us a little bit of what you believe makes you stand out amongst the other candidates?
What makes me stand out? I said, it's a talented group. I have had zero relationship, whether it be running for office or in government or anything, or working in a bureaucracy or whatever. I have been a total private sector person. I bring no preconceived notions to the work ahead. I think the fact that I haven't been involved directly with anything that's been going on, I'm not tied to any decisions, whether they be good or bad. I can look at everything first time and give my opinion. And I always think it's, it's good when you're, when you're looking to solve a problem, to bring in a fresh set of eyes. Because there's always issues or opportunities that somebody from the outside can look into. It's like when you write a piece or whatever and you're handing it to somebody else and they're like, oh, well, why don't you say it like this? You're like, oh, yeah, that sounds a lot better. I, I view the council as a collaborative thing, from playing team sports in high school to projects during my MBA program, to sales teams that I've assembled before. I've always been a collaborative person. So I, I try to, I work well in teams. I don't need all the credit. I don't desire all the credit. I thank you every once in a while. I like, but that being said, I, I think I, I would, my personality, my skill set would work well in a collaborative body like this.
Yeah. When I first started working in the city of Miami and I told everybody I had no previous experience, they actually, it was, they, a lot of people shared with me that that was a positive thing for sure, because you bring, like you said, a fresh set of eyes, different ideas. You're not, you don't have any preconceptions or notions about how things should be. So I had to Google what a commissioner was when I first. So I had to Google what a commissioner was when I first started, so, you know?
Well, it's, look, it's, it really, and the thing is, is that, back to what we're saying about village government, it's not like this government is so small and lean and is able to move that it's not like, like going into an entrenched bureaucracy where you're like, well, you gotta learn how this works, because you're gonna work like this. Just, like I said, we have the flexibility to be able to move and react in situations. That's why I I I think local government is the the ultimate problem solver. If you can't solve it yourself, your family can't solve it. I mean, to look to the federal government, it just, it just, it doesn't make any sense. You have to engage with the people around you. And 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 nobody is gonna have more empathy for you than your neighbors, you know? And that's it. I mean, this is one big neighborhood here, you know? And like, oh, it's this side, and that's east side and west side, and this is midtown. No, this is, we're all, we all live in Key Biscayne. So I I said, it's a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a way to affect people's lives that, like I said, it's substantive. And, I mean, you know, like I said, I'd love to be part of that process.
The village council position, you know, it's, it's a non-paid, just like the mayor's, that we've been doing it like this for many, many, since the beginning, right? So how much time do you plan to dedicate to this position?
Like, it's, it was clear to me before, because I had had some conversations, that it's not about having one meeting a month, you know? That's, that's, you know, that's like, you know, that's like saying, well, you know what, that, you know, the NFL, they only, they only work sixteen days, you know, the year because they only play sixteen games. Well, that's not the way it works, okay? You pretty much work the entire year towards this. I I'm very good at segmenting my time. I'm an early riser, and I go to, I don't, like I said, it's not a, I I know I'm gonna have to dedicate specific periods of time. Obviously, I have family, I've, you know, I have family, I have kids, I've got a, I've got a, but as I said, I I have the ability to focus. I, once again, I I got my MBA while I was working full-time. You know, I always worked jobs while I was in college. As I mentioned before, it's funny, because I haven't run a marathon in a while, but I was a marathon runner. I have run marathons. Maybe I wasn't a marathon runner. I've run marathons, to put it that way, not that fast, but, but I I'm able to sit there, you know, and say, okay, this is the work that needs to get done. Focus, get it done, accomplish the thing. If you're gonna start a task, do it well, or don't do it at all. So that is my, that is the way I'm looking at this, at the, at the council position, so.
That's awesome. So, you know, there's a lot of stress, you know, with life and all these challenges, especially in public service with people's opinions and all these things. So tell us, what are some of the things that you do to to relax after a stressful day?
Bourbon.
Bourbon, nice.
Yeah, well, that's
Need on ice, need or on ice?
Um, you know what, it all, you know what, I, as I, my bourbon-selling friends, because I, I think I mentioned, I sold wine in spirits for a long time. Maybe it's insulting, but I do like it on ice. It's too hot here. You need to, you need to put it on ice. Although, I gotta tell you, a nice glass of wine is right up there, so. But all kidding aside, even though that's not really all that much kidding, I do like to exercise. I said, I I got, I'll, I'll, I'll say something I probably shouldn't say. I was a cigarette smoker for twenty-five years, okay? And I quit when I was forty, which is twelve years ago. And when I quit, I said, you know what, this is gonna be a complete lifestyle change. I played sports in high school, whatever. Look, I started smoking when, back when it was supposedly cool, and I'm glad it's not cool anymore. Yeah, so, you know, but, so exercise became a big part of my life, you know? Because I, and it is amazing, and I encourage anybody who's a smoker out there to please quit. I'm not, I won't, as I said, I'm not gonna harangue anybody. I'm telling you, I went from a pack and a half smoker to to finishing a full marathon less than two years later. I've done triathlons, I did triathlons in Italy and Budapest. Once again, not record-breaking, okay, nothing, whatever, but definitely completed. Get your sense of smell back. Your clothes don't smell. It's expensive. It's, there's so much downside to it. Like I said, I didn't mean this to be a PSA, but it really, it was really a delineation point in my life. If I still was a smoker, my wife told me, she didn't mean me as a smoker, I'd already quit like seven years. She said, as I wouldn't have married you. I'm like, you know, I wouldn't blame you, so. So that's, that's that, so. But, but yeah, like I said, I I love, like I said, I love, we're talking about things that relax us, right? Yeah, exercise, like I said, a nice glass of wine, going out to dinner with my wife. Like I said, those trips that we take, some we take with kids, some we don't. You can imagine which ones are less stressful. And like I said, just getting outside. Look, I'm, I'm sitting out in my balcony right now, getting a nice tan, talking to you. So this is, these are the kind of things, we, we have, we have a, driving over the ricket fucker on the way home from having work in Miami or doing whatever. That, that is probably one of the most de-stressing things there is, you know? It really is, we, like, it's, we drive into paradise every day, so it's a, it's a great thing. And so, and we drive golf carts, come on, you know, it's golf cart, that's fun, you know? So I think it stresses a lot, but.
I don't, I don't think anybody gets stressed on a golf cart.
It's like, it's, it's, you know, Disney World for adults, you know, it's crazy, so.
So when you have a last-minute guess, what is a go-to meal?
A go-to meal? All right, so where am I getting takeout from? Because that's, because I am not going to cook, because I don't like to do dishes. My wife makes me do the dishes. So that being said, my go-tos are, Aisha, I love Aisha, we had that last night, fantastic Indian food. Milanesa is always a favorite, too. Uh, I gotta tell you, pizza, sir, pizza I like. I like Domino's, too, not gonna lie, so. Sir Pizza's got the pepperoni, which is, you know, whatever, but Domino's, I'm friends with Caesar over at Domino's, so I, I give you a plug also. But this, we, we really do have a great, if it's a lunch thing, definitely Golden Hog, grab some sandwiches. The new grill is great, too. But yeah, I mean, I I think we've, I mean, we've gotten to the point that we have a great, great little culinary scene here. And I, you know, I love it. It keeps expanding. There's a new place. Amartino, I think is what it's called. We've eaten at it a couple of times. It's there in the Key Colony, which is where the old keyhole used to be, which is fantastic. I recommend anybody to go there. It's great ceviche. So yeah, those would be my go-tos. So we do a lot of takeout. And I will say one other thing as a plug. As I said, I sold wine in spirit, so I always had a good relationship with restaurants. If you're going to pick up, not delivery, delivery, use Uber Eats, Postmates, whatever, but if you're going to pick up, call the restaurant directly. Because if you do it through an app, it kept paying like thirty percent of the app, or whatever. And you know what? Call the restaurant directly. All the owners will appreciate, and you let them know when you get there. It's like, hey, I called you directly, because I want you to put all that money in your pocket, because I want you to keep your businesses open here in Key Biscayne. Because that is the one thing, pandemic, whatever, the tennis store just closed by Golden Hog, which is really sad to see. I want to do everything we can to, you know, shop locally. I think it's a very important thing here. And like I said, I mean, this, these are people's, you know, livelihoods, you know, so we have to support them here.
I, you know, that make that, I like that. I like that. I'm gonna tell people to to call restaurants, especially if you're here in the key, you wanna order, even a pickup, order by phone.
Mike, Mike from Aisha told, he's like, hey, I'm glad you called me, because you know, I gotta, I didn't never, never knew that. Once again, if it's for delivery, it's a different story. But, you know, if it's for pickup, call direct.
Awesome. So what do you love most about the key?
I kind of went, I kind of went in this the other night. So I'm gonna rehash, I guess, some of the things I I talked about. I like the fact that I can drive my daughter to school on a golf cart. I like the fact that my dad has this group of friends at Golden Hog, and he goes there every morning and has coffee and sits there and chit chats. I like the fact that we have the best place to ride bike in all of South Florida, maybe all of Florida. I mean, it draws so many people. I like the fact that, you know, I have a dog, and I can walk him at two in the morning, and I don't have to give us, you know, a second thought, you know, about, oh, I'm out here by myself at two in the morning. You feel so incredibly safe here, you know? I love the Fourth of July parade, the fireworks. It's better than any place that, you know, that you can go. I mean, like I said, my cousin literally calls me like six months in advance, like, I got your parking space. I'm coming in for the Fourth of July, like, all right. And we actually rode in it this year. So I was part of the committee, and towards the end, I rode with with my family, which I had never done, and we had a blast. We did a, a theme that was Mardi Gras in July, so we handed out beads and cups and whatever, and it was pretty cool, so. What else? I love grilling with my friends. My parents live across the street, the sands, you know? I love the beach. I mean, like the level of outdoor, the community center, you know, to work out at. I mean, imagine my wife and I, so our kids are still teenagers, they don't have to pay. I think we paid three hundred and eighty dollars to be a member of the community center for a year, to be able to work out or whatever. A gym runs these days on on the other side of the bridge. Like, I, it's like two hundred dollars a month per person, you know? There's a, there's a lot of just built-in benefits that we have here, that some of it we take advantage of, some of it we don't. But like I said, it's, it's the community that that benefits. You know, and I, I love living here, you know, I love the people, you know? Love going to the Ritz and having a pina colada with Gino out there, but if you haven't done that, you gotta do that. That's, that's an experience, so. But yeah, that's all the stuff, and I can name probably a thousand things more, but it's just, it really is this place, you know, it, it has a culture in onto itself. I think people that come here realize that and, you know, and assimilate to it. As I mentioned before, you know, we had two kids, two-bedroom apartment, you know, thankfully, I bought it a long time ago, and prices were a lot lower. But the easiest thing would be to sell it and move to a big house somewhere, you know? I'm not gonna bash Kendall again. I'm gonna say somewhere else, you know? But I'm not gonna do it. But, but it's, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to live, you know, somewhere else. I want to live here, you know? So, you know what? I have to work extra hard. My wife has to work extra hard. And that's kind of the reason I ran, too, because I wanted, like I said, if we're gonna put in the extra work to live here, I want to make sure it's still the great place that it's always been, so.
And lastly, and lastly, can you explain, can you share with us a perfect weekend for you and your family in the key?
The perfect weekend, all right. I already, I already mentioned my affinity for wine and bourbon, so I guess that's, I'm gonna mention that again. Perfect weekend, all right. So it's, the weather, like today, maybe a little less cloudy. So schedule my last meeting on Friday for like two or three o'clock, so I get back early before the traffic. Grab the kids, my wife, jump in the golf cart, head to the cleat. You know, watch the sunset from there, have some appetizers, and head back in. This is Friday night. Still, we go to Milanesa for dinner. Love that place. My daughter calls it the lollipop restaurant, because of the lollipop tree, so I usually grab like ten or fifteen for them. It's amazing what a lollipop does for a child. I, I, there is nothing as an adult that is as pleasurable as a lollipop is for a child. It's, it's just nuts. So that's Friday, come back home Saturday morning, and a perfect weekend. My son sleeps past six o'clock in the morning. We don't, we don't have too many perfect weekends at the house these days. Make coffee. I always make the coffee. That's my job. I'm not a perfect husband, but I make the coffee, okay? Every day, make the coffee. Have some coffee with my wife, hang out, invite my dad or mom over to stay with the kids, and we go play tennis usually. So we've gotten into that. My wife's gotten really good, better than me, some would say. Then after that, go pick up probably a couple of sandwiches at Golden Hog or a pizza from Domino's, come back, have lunch with the kids, relax, and then probably head to the beach at night, invite some friends over. We, like I said, since we've made a lot of friends here now, especially, it's, it's amazing when your, when your kids get into school, how your friend group grows, you know, because you have so many things in common with people, and then your kids can play with his kids, so. Invite some friends over, you know, order some takeout directly from the restaurant. And maybe, like I said, Aisha's one of our go-tos. And then Sunday, once again, sun sleeps in a little early. We usually go to church at ten o'clock. My, my daughter's in the choir now, which is, is kind of cool, so it's fun. After that, grab brunch with the parents. And time it out just perfect, so that the kids take a nap when the dolphin game comes on. Dolphins obviously have to win, you know, for a perfect weekend. Here. And then after that, well, you know, after the game, whatever, four o'clock, whatever, that time, take the kids down to the beach or to, like I said, my parents live the sands. Great grill there, invite some friends over, and just, just relax, you know? And just call it a day, you know, and just enjoy in the outside here, which is just fantastic, you know? So that pretty much would be a perfect weekend, so. Could happen this weekend, or no. You never know. I gotta put signs out, okay?
I gotta put signs. You gotta put up those signs. No, 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 I love it, I love it. Awesome. Nick, it's been great to have you on the show and get to know you a little bit. Hopefully, other residents also get to, get to listen in and get to know you, and, well, you know, good luck, good luck in this race. And thank you for for taking the leap. Thank you for taking the leap to serve the community, you know, I know it takes a lot, so thank you.
Well, like I said, I, I thank you for having me, and honestly, it has been a pleasure. I knew it would be. Like I said, I've listened to your podcast for a long time. So thanks for having me. Like I said, if people see me out in public or whatever, I come knocking on your doors, don't be afraid. It's just me. I just want to put a yard sign in your house, so. But beyond that, you know, like I said, this is a great experience. I think we've got a great slate of candidates. So I don't think the community can go wrong. But yeah, I hope you vote for me, and then we can go from there, so. And then you can hold me accountable for all the stuff I've said on here, so.
All right, all right, it's a wrap, man.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Alejandro. I really appreciate it.